For the invocation from Benissota, the Mountain View Community Church remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
And the chaplain is sheriff's office, just so you know. Thank you guys for, this is such a privilege and I always want to make sure we say that and we don't take it serious enough sometimes, and so I appreciate that. Bow your heads with me in a word of prayer. Father God, as we come before you, we're grateful for this city. We're grateful for what it means, we're grateful for what it can do to people's lives, and it's such a beautiful place. We're grateful for how you move in it. We ask that that would continue and that that would show up in wisdom for the council, that that would show up in the decision-making that they struggle with and wrestle with. And Father, I ask for that, to surround them with protection from you and as they get all the feedback from this or that, God, that they would be just steadfast and firm and passionate about this city, which I know they are. Bless them and honor them and watch over their families. Just surround the staff as they wrestle behind the scenes and help all of those who live in this city to really make it their own. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. End. All roll please.
Mayor Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Councilmember Sharaki and Frieda, or excuse, we have a quorum.
Are there any council member announcements? Councilman Bates, what's?
I don't.
Oh, wait.
I raised my hand out of turn.
Oh, look at that.
Planning.
That's what I'm asking, are you gonna make it for me?
Alright, let's go first, let's go to the approval of the minutes from the September 8th Regular City Council Meeting and the September 9th General Government Committee Meeting. Councilman Bates.
I recommend we approve the minutes of December 8th, 2015, Regular City Council Meeting and the September 9th, 2015, General Government Meeting.
Second from Councilman Weed, call the roll.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Are there any council member announcements yet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ekstrom.
Thank you very much. We have Public Works Committee meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 PM.
At 4 o'clock, my favorite member of council is gonna be chairing that meeting, that's great. Any others?
Right here.
Oh, Councilman Weed?
Yeah, I would like to congratulate the Fremont County Airport Board and tied in with that the Florence Pioneer Days Committee for putting on an outstanding event, and I hope a lot of people had the opportunity to get out to the airport and enjoy the air show. It was very well put together, it was very enjoyable, so congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, any others? We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda and consent agenda. Doug, will you review the consent agenda, please?
Okay, the first item on the consent agenda is a temporary street closure. We reviewed this street closure at the September 9th General Government Committee, and this closure is an application for the 400 block of Main Street. The closure would occur on Saturday, October the 3rd, so that's the first Saturday in October. It would be from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This would be for the Chamber of Commerce for an event that they're sponsoring. It's called the Kara Fisher Memorial Art Festival. So hopefully it'd be a good event in the downtown, and we're gonna do our best to have the construction pretty well straightened out, kinda cleaned up, as much parking in the area as we possibly can for the event and for the businesses that are open at that time. Second item is to authorize a temporary street closure on, again, we talked about this at the September 9th General Government Committee, it was recommended at that time. This is for the closure of Skyline Drive. This would be on Saturday, October the 31st, from 8:00 until noon for Department of Corrections' color wean run, so hopefully another good event here in town for the fall. Next item is the appointment of Austin Dunderman to the Planning Commission, and Austin is here in the back of the room tonight. This appointment would fill the sole vacancy on the Planning Commission, the vacancy that occurs right now, and this term would be for the remainder of the term that would expire on July 1st, 2016, and then be subject to the Planning Commission renewing it at that time. Next item on the agenda is to designate the reinsurance carrier, which would be Reliant Standard Insurance Company, for the stop-loss coverage of the city's medical plan and to authorize a plan amendment to provide that prescription drugs in the, in the plan be included in the out-of-pocket maximums. Authorize a change of network provider from Cofinity, from Cofinity, which is really a Colorado provider or network to Aetna, which is really more of a national network that sort of broadens the program, and to authorize a 5% increase in premiums. This was reviewed over several meetings by our Insurance Advisory Committee. The committee members recommended these changes, and the goal here is to make sure that we continue to have a sustainable health benefit plan for all city employees for the future. Now, these changes, if approved, will be effective on October 1st of this year. Next item is bid number...
May I, for purposes of the record, the premium increase would be effective January 1st of 2016.
Alright, correct. The bid, number 31 of 15, this would be for the chloride feed equipment for the Water Department to DPC Industries of Hudson, Colorado, the amount in $19,216. This was recommended, we reviewed this and recommended it at the September 9th General Government Committee, and this is to purchase equipment, replace some existing equipment that's been, become unreliable for the treatment process. Three bids were received, from the three that were solicited, this vendor was the low bid, and these funds are included in the 2015 budget. The next item is bid number 33 of 15, this is for 75 ton of buk, excuse me, bulk salt for the engineering, the street division. This is to Tri-State Commodities Agreed Colorado for the amount of $7,350. The bulk salt is used in the, kind of the annual maintenance, it's a routine purchase that we do every year. It's mixed in with sand and spread into the icy areas for the winter, for maintenance purposes and for safety. Two bids were received from those that were solicited, this vendor again is the low bidder, and these funds are included in the 2015 budget. Next item, next bid is 34 of 15, this is for 1,700, or 17,300 pounds of cationic polymer. This is for the Water Department to Nalco Company of Naperville, Illinois, an amount not to exceed $16,500, is again a purchase that we do each year. This polymer is used as a coagulant and aids in the treatment process. This was the sole source bid, and again, these funds are included in the 2015 budget. And then lastly, the bills payable for the last two-week period, and that's it for tonight.
Are there any additions or corrections? Councilman Weed?
Yeah, um, uh, in thinking about this, I don't know that I wanna pull it, but I don't know Austin Dunderman, and I really don't know anything about him, and I don't know if it'd be appropriate to pull the item, or I would like to at least have him address us briefly and tell me why he would be a good person to have on the Planning Commission.
I think that's appropriate, we could probably do that as part of this. Mr. Dunderman, would you like to step to the podium and, and let us know why you're interested in being on the Planning Commission?
Well, I picked the Planning Commission because I thought about doing the council, but I'm not ready for the council yet. And I figured the Planning Commission, there's an opening and it's a good spot to get my foot in the door so I can start working for this town. Since my wife and I moved here, it's, Canyon City is just a great town, and we love raising our kids here, and I wanna make sure it stays that way. So as long as I'm around, I'm still gonna be working for the city of Canyon City, if you'll let me. Anything else you wanna know?
Yeah, I'm curious about some of the things that we're working on here and kinda where you land on them. Like, I mean, we hear a lot of positive and certainly a fair amount of negative about our Main Street project, for instance, and what's your thoughts on what we're doing down on Main Street?
On Main Street?
Yes.
To be honest with you, I think we're doing a really good job of bringing the property values up, but I think we also need to look at the property owners and/or business owners to help with the maintenance of the buildings. Just walking down Main Street, I could, I could just tell that some buildings needed a paint job. Just a fresh set of paint would just match what the beautiful work that we've done to the streets so far, and I think that would be great, and I think we need more advertising to bring in more businesses downtown. I really don't like going downtown and seeing the empty spots, the fore rent, for sale, empty, that's not bringing any money into the town. So I think a little bit more advertising for our downtown, showing people around, not only in Fremont County, but the other counties, to help bring in more business. More business, more taxes, more money for us to accomplish things that we need to get done.
Just another question, over the last three or four years, this council and the city in general has, in my opinion, taken steps to make it easier to get things done around here. You know, I think for a very long time, there was kind of this anti-growth, I won't say anti-business, but difficult, a difficult place to do business, and, you know, what's your take on regulations and what's the Planning Commission's role and where should we go?
Well, forward is a great way to go, and taking steps, no matter what they are, even if it's a small step, it's a step forward, and that's what we need to do. We can't, you know, we're still recovering from an economic downfall, you know, we're still, no matter what stats you look at or anything like that, you're gonna find ups and downs everywhere, but as you can see, we're still recovering from it, and we're still trying to do better, and right now, the Planning Commission is a great place to make sure that we're putting the money into Canyon City where it needs to be, and the construction, rebuilding of the streets, anything like that, is a great place to start. I mean, the one thing I was always taught when I was a kid, land, take care of your land, buy land, have land, take care of it, if you do that, you reap rewards, you'll never, that you always have, you know, it's just, it just keeps giving back to you. So being in the Planning Commission, I can help guide us to make sure that we make sure Canyon City grows higher and makes more money and is worth more as a city.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your answering my questions.
You're welcome.
You appear to be well-spoken, I think you're gonna be a great addition to the Planning Commission. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
Councilman Ekstrom.
Austin.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for volunteering for this position, and my question, recently, master, the eastern Fremont County Eastern Corridor Trail Plan was presented to the Planning Commission. What is your understanding of that particular plan? There's some misconceptions regarding, you know, the reaches that may have regarding property owners and, and the development of the trail corridors in Canyon City, and so I was curious what your stand was on that.
I think that Canyon City, I mean, just in the area, the trails and everything like that, I walk them almost every day. I live right next to the Hogbacks, and what has been done there is just amazing. You know, I have my son, he's four months old, so he's still in a stroller, I'm still able to take it back there and walk with him. So I love what you guys are doing, I love the path that we're going. Maintenance is a big thing that I saw back there. That was, that was the upkeep of it, and I know that weather plays a big part, rain, snow, and all that thing, all that stuff, it just seemed like the upkeep of it could have been just a little bit more, maybe a little bit more money put towards the upkeep of it. But other than that, I think it looks beautiful, I think it looks great. I think it does nothing but help promote Canyon City even more, giving us a broader aspect of people being brought into Canyon City, not just the river rafters or, or the bridgegoers, now we're getting hikers, bikers, all that stuff. We're broadening ourselves is the greatest thing we could be doing right now, and I think you guys are doing a great job at that.
Any others? Councilman Ketchmar.
Austin, I'd also like to say thank you for participating in the community. So where is it that you came from?
I'm originally from Indiana, so, and then grew up there, joined the military in 2003, spent time in Korea, Japan, Iraq, assorted other places. My final, I've been to Fort Carson twice in my military career, and I always told my mom and everything that Colorado is where I'm gonna be. And Fort Carson only being, I always came to Canyon City to visit, I loved it out here, took my son to the bridge and everything like that, I love it. So, I, my wife and I have just made roots here, and, and she, she's a military brat, her dad was Air Force. So for us to have actual roots and find a place where we can settle down is amazing. So...
Any others? Okay, any additions or corrections to the consent agenda or the agenda? May I have a motion, please? Councilman Weed?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bates, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next is the Administrator's Report.
Just a few items for tonight. First item is regarding sales tax revenues, as the council members and maybe some members of the public know, is that this year, you know, as the economy is starting to sort of rebound, we hope that that trend will continue. The sales tax revenues have been up so far through August of this year, so that's all good news, and we hope that this, that this trend will continue. So there's a report, there's a chart, so hopefully it kind of fills in all the information for the city council and for the public. Next item, I just wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, the 25th, at 9:00, the room next door, we will be holding a budget workshop with the city council. As you may recall, the Finance Director, Harry Patel, did present to the city council, I think it was back on August the 19th, kind of a draft of sort of the direction that we were going in terms of projects and so on and so forth. We continue to include that into the budget this year. We try to, again, try to take a conservative approach, so we're gonna be reviewing the budget, all funds, at Friday's meeting, and get council's direction. Our goal is to be able to, out of that meeting, make any kind of adjustments that might be necessary, and then to submit a budget to the city council on September the 30th, which is the charter requirement. Third item on the report is a, just an update on building department activity. One of the things that you'll notice in the report that I provided to you as to what's going on in the community, again, it's sort of reflective of what's going on in the economy and here in town, we have seen building activities are up through August of this year. Now, when I say that, you'll notice that permits are down slightly this year through August compared to last year through August, but the valuation of that work is up substantially. You'll also notice that we did provide a little bit of information on the fees and use tax collected, and I can provide more detail on this later, but we are seeing some results of the stimulus program that the city council had set forth here recently, that people are taking advantage of that, and hopefully we're gonna continue to see more of that as we go forward. So just kind of a brief update on the building activity in the community. Another quick item, I just wanted to remind everybody that may have an interest in it, it was brought up a few minutes ago about the downtown and improvements in the downtown area. You know, there's certainly a number of questions about, well, why are we doing this and so on and so forth, and, and I think that, you know, one of the things that the city council has set out with respect to the downtown is that these improvements are not just to improve a street, but really to begin to change the fortunes, if you will, of the downtown, so that as it was brought up in the, in the, in the discussion with our, our new planning commissioner, we want to be able, not only to fix up the street, you know, the pavement's not in the best shape, not only widen out the sidewalks, start creating the outdoor cafes, but also, we are talking on, this week on Wednesday, about the idea of what's called a downtown development authority, and that downtown development authority, its function is going to be to help us take the next step with regards to those, those properties in the downtown area, so that we're working with private property owners to start securing private investment back into those buildings. We know that, that businesses go into the downtown, go looking at the downtown now, and when they find out the cost of rent, when they find out the cost of fixing up the building, if it's a change of use, the cost of putting in a sprinkler system and so on and so forth, a lot of those things become sort of overwhelming, and our challenge is to figure out how to overcome that, and that's one of the things that this DDA is going to be taking on in our downtown. So, you know, the, the work that's going on in the downtown is, is not just about, you know, fixing up the street, as a lot of people look at and go, well, why don't we take that money and put it into our streets elsewhere? It's about so much more than that, and there are many things that are gonna be part of the, the solution to our downtown. Fixing up the streets, not the sole solution, but the DDA and some other things that the city council has coming forward will be part of that, and we'll be talking about the DDA on Wednesday. Also, I think that for tonight, that was the last thing I wanted to talk about.
Alright, thank you, Doug. Item number six is the second reading of ordinance number 10, series 2015, and ordinance rezoning 721 Bar Avenue. Clerk, will you read by title, please?
This is the ordinance number 10, series of 2015, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the city of Canyon City, Colorado, 721 Bar Avenue.
May I have a motion, please? Councilman Bates?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 10, series of 2015, on the second reading. Second.
Second from Councilman Ketchmar, any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Member Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Item number seven is a public hearing for the application for a new tavern liquor license at 1208 South Ninth Street. I'll open the public hearing and request a report from the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
A hotel/restaurant liquor license. Slipping, okay?
I am slipping, I can tell you that.
So, may I have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Donovan Baggett, sole member of Somewhere Saloon LLC, who has filed an application for a new hotel/restaurant liquor license at 1208 South Ninth Street. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the location and through legal notice in the Daily Record. The applicant wishes to expand their current restaurant operation to include the offering of alcoholic beverages. As evidence in support of this application relative to the needs of the neighborhood and the desires of the adult inhabitants, a petition has been submitted bearing 100 signatures representing 84 from the inside-city limits, 14 outside-city limits, and two that has been undetermined. Mr. Donovan has stated that staff will attend the next training offered by the city in 2016. Upon review of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate state and city forms and fees have been submitted, the diagram of the premises meets the filing requirements, the applicant has possession of the premises, and the applicant holds a valid sales and food service licenses, and the company is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have of the applicant.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Donovan, or Mr. Baggett, thanks for coming this evening. We have a list of standard questions that we ask. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, sir, we've, we had this establishment in West Cliff for the last two years.
Okay, and so, is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file at your establishment?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees do you have or expect to have?
Right now, we have six. We've just been running at minimum staffing, because we've just been running the restaurant five days a week. In West Cliff, I think the highest employment we had was 12, 12 employees at one time, which hopefully be a few more here since it's a lot bigger facility and a bigger area, a bigger town.
So, are your employees trained on the Liquor Code, and if so, how are they trained?
Actually, as far as the ones working right now, I think there's three of us that are through TIPS, and as far, as soon as we have liquor license, anybody I hire will get with the, the board and schedule another TIPS class and get everybody certified.
Okay, and are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in the suspension and/or revocation of your liquor license?
Yes, sir, and in two years, we've never had one blemish, one on our, on our license, though.
It's, you know, I have, I have a couple of questions. There's been a variety of establishments at that location over the years, and there has been issues with the neighbors in the past about late hours or noise or, do you have any comments about what you intend to do or how you intend to address those issues?
The one we've met with, pretty much, I'd be willing to say about 85, 90% of the neighbors around the area, and all have been really supportive. That building in particular, for five years, I was actually the house DJ in the house band, so I'm pretty familiar with the problems they've had in the past. When we moved up here in 96, I think it just opened as Judy's and, you know, went on to Sunset Grill, then Griffins, and one of the biggest issues is usually the back, on the backside where the patio is, and the biggest problem you had there is whenever you had DJs or you had live bands, is the way it was set up, it was always, they were always set up in the front. And the problem with that is, when you have speakers set up, they shoot directional, which is straight through, which goes straight through that little corridor and straight out the back door, straight through the patio. The thing we're changing, which is the exact same thing we did to our barn in West Cliff, is rotating that and putting the stage in the back. People that don't understand sound, at first of all, they kind of get nervous because they think that's gonna actually be louder because it's closer, but like I said, sound travels in the path that it's aiming. So with those speakers, with that room being in the back, if we have live music or something or a DJ, it has to go through two cinder block walls, a walk-in, a kitchen, another cinder block wall, then a exterior wall. And then one thing I usually do is put up these foam bass traps you put in the corner, and they sit about six to eight inches below the, the corners, and that holds vibrations from the bass inside the building, because bass has the tendency to hit and bleed through and push through the wall where treble bounces around. So that's one of the, the things, if you ever been on a stage, most bands, if you have your monitor set up, the stage is a fraction of the noise of what you hear out front, and it's not the same sound. So by moving that to the back, you're gonna eliminate probably, I'd be willing to say 75% of the noise you'd hear outside. So that's, that's one of the main things right there, is just, just the way it's set up.
Okay, well, I'm glad you've given some thought to it, and I'm really glad you've talked to the neighbors, and so, it'll be good to have someone back in that building. Why, I mean, not good to, good...
Yeah, it's been, it's been vacant for too long.
It is good to have someone. I don't have any more questions.
Any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience? You step to the podium, please?
She's just excited.
Oh, just excited.
I love these people, they are the most...
For my Canyon City customers that used to drive to West Cliff several times a month.
We have her step to the lectern and give her name and address for our record.
Oh.
My name is Kathleen Craven.
My name is Kathleen Craven. My husband is sitting there, Ronald Craven. We have lived at 907 South Third Street, just relatively close to Centennial Park, and we've been in that house for 10 years. We love Canyon City. And I don't really want to make this public, but we used to live in California. We are really glad that we don't any longer and that this is our base. And I love the Baggads. They are the most ethical, honest people I've ever known in my life. I support those completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? All right, well, I'll close the public hearing, request a motion from the council. Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I would make the motion to, or to approve the application for a new hotel/restaurant liquor license for the Somewhere Saloon LLC at 1208 South Ninth Street. Second.
Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
All right, well, congratulations, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you very much.
Last on our agenda is citizens' request to speak to city council.
We have, we have received one written request to speak to council. That's Lisa Heims, 3165 Grandview. She wants to talk about government tourism conference.
Okay, all right.
Lisa?
Lisa? Lisa, it's your turn. She's smushing, that's what you're supposed to do when you run the chamber. It's all yours. What do you want to talk about this evening?
Oh, yeah, I'm up here for my public thing. Great. Okay, I just returned from the Governor's Tourism Conference. And I, I have to say that I'm really excited about how the whole, I don't want to say three days, it was probably about 48 hours went. Made a lot of good contacts, had a lot of good communication, went to a lot of great breakout sessions regarding international travel. Councilman Brown and I have already discussed this. The international traveling groups, FAM and so forth, that, that bring our tourists here, they will not book in a hotel that's less than a four-star. So we can't get people here overnight. We can get them to come down for a few hours, they bring the bus down, they take the bus back. We want them overnight. That's just one of the instances. I've spoken a lot with, with the international groups while I was there, but one of the things that kept coming up over and over and over again about the communities that have become successful, that were struggling, one of the things that made a difference was that everybody worked together. And I'm going to give this same talk tomorrow to the county. The county, the city, the chamber, the FEDC, the FCTC, we're all working hard to see our community successful. And, and maybe we need to have more meetings with all of us at the table to see what we can do individually to make things happen. So I'm asking for all of us to consider working together for a better Fremont County and a better Canyon City. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
I have.
All right, we're adjourned.